All right, this time we'll read the meeting. Please stand before the podium. What ladies?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of our.
All right, if you're caring with me tonight, usually I will go cheat sheet will go by, but I don't have a video, so I'll try to be professional as I can as I do it. All right, at this time I need a motion to approve the amended agenda. Steve, second, Ron. Any reason for amendment is there are Ron's daughters on?
I would request that the agenda be amended because my daughter is on the consent agenda for a SIFAN appointment. I would request that the agenda be amended and that that be a separate appointment.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Any votes? All right, this time we move on to public comments. Again, last time we revised our guidelines for public comments and I'll read off again what we did last time and then from now on I won't read this going forward, but it's all posted on our website and we'll keep following that. All right, last time here Wayne Central School District community members, we never better meet the needs of our community, the Board of Education decided to revise the public comment section of our meeting. Specifically, public comment will be restructured in the following manner. Number one, community sign up. All community members who would like to participate in public comment will need to sign up beforehand to do so. Community members can sign up, will be in advance by contacting the Board of Education clerk, Mrs. Kathy Kathy Reitz, head 315-524-1001. A sign up sheet will also be available on meeting dates up to 6:45 PM. After 6:45, the sign up sheet for meeting will close. The time for public comment is, public comment will last for fifteen minutes as had been in the past unless it's identified as Board of Education. Three, speaker's roll call during his meeting, the Board of Education president and or his or her designated will call for all speakers who will sign up to speak. Each speaker will be given up three minutes to talk. All speakers must adhere to this time frame. Four, deferment, speakers cannot defer their time slots from another person. Five, the content during meetings, speakers are asked to refrain from discussing matters that involve district personnel and or a particular student's record. School staff and students should not be named during public comment. Speakers are also asked to avoid repetitive comments. Six, remarks, all remarks should be addressed to the Board of Education directly. Seven, information, a copy of all written correspondence should be given to the Board and clerk before they enter the Board of Education meeting. Eight, questions, community members are able to ask board members questions. However, community members should know that board members will not engage in conversation or answer questions during this portion of the meeting. The Board of Education will respond to questions in one of three ways, on his webpage, directly to individuals, through phone call, written letter, or to the public in future meetings where it could be in presentations. We thank our community in advance for adhering to these new procedures. Our goal is to better serve you and we do believe that these procedures will be of assistance. Should you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to reach out to us for clarity necessarily, come around to President Board of Education. Again, there's, I mentioned this last time, there's lots of ways to contact us and people don't have to wait for a meeting. We can contact the board email, we can have your response that we receive that everybody sees at the same time. Sometimes move those things on to the appropriate personnel that should handle a situation or closest to the situation, whether it's a teacher, whether it's a principal, whether it's a district office, whether it's a superintendent, and if it's up to us at that point, then we will respond to it. So, ready for efficiency and clarity and if things take care of sooner, it's a lot better to not wait for a board meeting to make comments and be kind of obvious concerns and that stuff, so we're working on it. Hopefully, hopefully being more efficient with that one. All right, this time if there's anybody who'd like to address the board during the time, okay, we'll have them state their name and address in the top of their cover. All right, so guidelines for the public comment, again, this is what's going to be writing saying, public comment is a privilege and not a right. Individuals who abuse the privilege will forfeit their opportunity for public comment. The board will not discuss, will not permit discussion in public session involving individuals, district personnel or students. And again, comment is addressed to board. If you have any questions, make sure you write them down so the clerk can have a nice clerk, it's Mr. Exepp, Mrs. Reitz is not here. So, at this time I'd like to call Tim Burley up.
Have a seat right here, it's okay. My name is Tim Burley. I live at sixty-one oh seven Lily Pond Way, right over across the street. I just would like to, I'm a PE teacher in the district at the Wayne Primary School. I coach cross-country indoor and outdoor track. And I just briefly want to recap and just let some interesting facts about what happened last Saturday. We had a hundred and forty-one teams here for our cross-country invitational. I'm sure many people have heard by now. We had approximately three thousand kids were entered. We had some of the top teams, not only in the state, but in the country that attended. And what I'd like to do is publicly thank our buildings and grounds, custodial staff, the brownstone training, our EMTs, the firefighters that came, our Wayne Booster Club did a great job there too. And just after speaking with a lot of people from all over the state, we're hosting sectionals November fourth, the state meet November eleventh. And this was an opportunity for Wayne to show off their campus and everything that we can do. Spoke with teams from all over the state and they said they love the campus, they love the facilities, they enjoyed the time that they spent here. A lot of them are looking forward to hopefully getting their teams to come back, even aside from kind of what happened when out there. They were very happy with how we handled those adverse situations. And I just wanted to put that out there that without these guys in the background, we couldn't put that need on. Again, sometimes I don't think they always get the recognition they deserve, but the campus is great and they just could not get enough good comments about how well they did things. So, that's all I have for that one. Thank you.
All right, we have, this time you've been in. All right, this time we move on to the board member comments, a board member would like to speak.
I would. I was reminded, I saw, I've noticed the other day that the seniors were again selling magazines. And I was reminded again that that's one of the great traditions at Wayne Central, the senior trip. And it also happens to be that this week in the class of nineteen sixty-seven, first class to have a senior trip is having their reunion. And I thought, well, that's fiftieth year reunion, but then I got to counting. It's actually their fiftieth reunion, but we've had fifty-one class trips since they started the class trip back in nineteen sixty-seven. I don't know of too many school districts where the conditions have been such that students and staff could enjoy a trip to New York, with the exception of two thousand and eleven, for fifteen years. That's quite a tradition. Two thousand and one, I'm sorry, two thousand and one, after nine eleven, so. Just I wanted to compliment the staff on having that kind of relationship with our students and providing that kind of an experience for our kids. Then the last two meetings, two meetings ago we heard our regions report, this last meeting we heard our report on our common course scores. I'd like to give a pat on the back to our strategic planning team for helping to align the district in our goals and for making progress towards those goals. We still have some items to work on, but we know that we ranked in the entire Finger Lakes BOCs area, we ranked third in our math scores and we ranked sixth in our ELA scores. And that's a very good standard. Well, next item is four county boards of directors. As many of you know, there's going to be a leadership change in four county. I intend to attend the board directors meeting next week. If you have any suggestions or any thoughts on what direction four county should go, please get in touch with me. And at the meeting in October, I'll report back on the discussion from the Wayne County Board of Directors. And then last, there was an article in today's Syracuse newspaper. Right now, eleven point three percent of all students, college students nationally are in default on their college loans. And I got to thinking about the fact and how that's going to impact our economy going forward. We have a figure from the state called college and career ready. If you get a seventy-five on an English region, if you get an eighty on a math region, the state considers you to be college ready. I don't think that's enough. I think that as a Board of Education, we need to get some thoughts to making sure our students who want to college are truly college ready. So, that's something that I would like to think about going forward. What other measures could we use to determine if our kids really are college ready so that they don't end up in a position in which they're saddled with college debt and have no way to pay for it? Thank you.
I just was, my wife brings up the latest and greatest on our Facebook. And I was reading this, the responses to Channel Eight's article last week, or this past Monday it was. And I've seen some people that believe the district is just now adjusting our transportation policies. And that bothers me because I know it's not true. So, I decided to go back and read our passport packets, which is less exciting than reading them the first time. And for those that are saying allowing multiple pickup and drop-off locations is a reaction, I would ask that you go back and look for the following. The information's under board packet stamp on our district website. April sixth, we read the policy fifty-seven twenty. And in that policy, we were slated to have one pickup and drop-off location, no questions asked. We disagreed with that, so we sent it back to committee. And in that, you can see all the amendments are in red. So, then I kept looking for when the actual appointment date was. On June eighth, we went, revisited policies fifty-seven twenty and the revisions, and it reads that there are allowed three stopping pickup points that have to be, they can be different, but they have to be consistent daily. It also says that we will be looking at case-by-case emergency situations to change what we're doing. Again, all available under the board packet stamp. And the policy was approved that night. It was June eighth. So, I invite everybody who thinks that the, that we're reacting to a news briefing or whatever we would call it. And you'll see the policy was written, and it was written three months and ten days before Channel Eight misreported the information to the public.
Jeremy kind of stole my thoughts because I also did a little digging. I didn't necessarily go to the board packet. I went to the policy manual, which is online. I have two copies here, if anybody's interested, with the highlights and the date that it went into the policy manual, which was six eight seventeen. So, I just would like, I think our, our board that we work together, we have a policy board and we don't do things willy-nilly based on what can be misrepresented in the media, that there's a thought process, there's a first reading, there's a second reading, and then it's voted on. So, if anybody's interested, they're there. The other thing I wanted to say is, I wasn't here in last meeting because I had open house at the district that actually pays me. And the same things that you were hearing at that meeting, I was hearing at open house. Delays in buses, change in schedules, I probably the first five or six days of school, probably changed sixty kids' schedules. Who wants to drop this? Who wants to take that? Parents wanting different things, it happens. But the other thing I, that over the years that I've worked is, I understand we have a lot of angst with primary parents, even elementary parents, but you would be surprised how many children, a bus goes a different way than you usually go with your family. Kids do not recognize their street nor their home. So, if the bus driver pulls up and says, you know, Suzie Smith, this is your stop, Suzie's chatting, oh, that all takes time and parents have to understand that. Kids do not know sometimes where they live. So, every district deals with transportation delays, scheduling issues, and everything else that can come. And you give them time, you give your building administrators the confidence and the staffing to fix things, and it all falls into place within ten or fifteen days at most. So, that's my statement on it. I apologize for not being here last, or last two weeks.
Just a couple of updates. This past Saturday, I went to the four county school board's legislative committee meeting and we had, I emailed you all some updates and we really had some really good roundtable discussions about what our legislative papers are going to be for four county this year. There was a really, really good representation from members of other districts there. And we will be meeting monthly to go over what we would like to have our papers be submitted to. So, I, as I've asked before, if you're interested, please send some additional topics. You know, one of the topics I had mentioned to the roundtable discussion because it is pertinent to us and to a lot of our neighboring districts, is still the ongoing issue of Ginnay and what would happen if that, things change with the lawsuits that are going on. And just to refer to some of the other neighboring towns across the country who have had nuclear power plant closures and what that impact has done, just not only to the communities but around as well. So, it was a really, really good discussion, so we are meeting again in October. This past Tuesday, I had the opportunity to go over to Ginnanda and go to the swim meet and watch, it's actually our Wayne girls swim meet, team of two. So, I had the pleasure of watching them. It was a scrimmage, they were swimming against Mercy, but I got the opportunity to watch some of her, at least one of her girls was able to participate, one was injured. So, it was just a lot of fun just to be able to go and just represent Wayne. And I have a schedule, like the rest of the schedule, are, at least one of our swimmers for sure has made sectionals, so I will get the information. We're not sure if it's class B or class C, because Ginnanda's class C, she's class B. So, I have the dates for you if you're interested in going. I know her mom was just very gracious that I was being able to go with my daughter and just cheer her on. The other information was the primary and elementary had their first PTO meeting this past Monday. It was well-attended. There is a lot of information out there for upcoming events, so the bash was this late last Friday and that was wonderful. But a couple of other things, and I'll get some dates to you folks about grandparents' Day because that's spread out over three days this year. They mentioned to let the cross-country fun run up to the primary school reception next week. And there's just a lot of activities that they are working on for this year. So, any information that's on the website, if you look under both the primary or the elementary schools, they have a PTO tab there and a lot of the information is there. So, that is all.
I am Wayne Central's, we're our board's delegate to the NISP conference. And I sent you back on September eleventh, I sent an email with all of the resolutions that are being put out for a vote. So, I would just guess that you looked them over and I highlighted a few and I thought might be particularly of interest. Suzie's will come over, if you have any thoughts or any concerns, let me know and I'll take that with me.
Do you need it before we go to the conference?
Yeah, it'd be nice.
Yes, just one day there, boy. Anyone else?
Yeah, just wanted to say thanks to the elementary and primary PTO for the bash, that on, and for administrators and teachers that showed up on their own time to be there. Appreciate that. Looks like the kids had a great time.
Let takes opportunity to ask all of you to encourage students of Wayne Primary and Wayne Elementary and the fifth and sixth grades of the middle school to participate in this year's Fire Prevention Week activities. The five fire departments of Wayne Central School District, yes there are five, are all participating with the goal of teaching our students how to keep themselves and their families safe. These departments, Lincoln, Ontario, Union Hill, Walworth, and West Walworth are providing the people, equipment, and resources to support multiple school presentations, fire truck tours, a station open house at the Ontario Fire Station on Saturday, October seventh, and the ride to school on a fire truck program during Fire Prevention Week. This year's Fire Prevention Week theme, Every Second Counts, Plans Two Ways Out, is a perfect opportunity to make sure our students think like woodchucks because they always know two ways out. For those of you that know firefighter Bob, he has his little woodchuck with him that he always tells the kids, woodchucks know two ways out. That way you get out of your house if there's a fire, front door's blocked, you can get out a second way of the house. So, it works very well. Last summer, at the Wayne County Fair, Bob was there for a day at the safety booth and he had the county fire coordinator there with him. Couple of kids from OE, Free Will and OP walked up, screamed firefighter Bob, run over to him, give him a hug. And Bob looks at the kids and goes, tell fire coordinator what firefighter Chuck tells you. These are five, six, seven-year-old kids. You look right at them, go, know two ways out. So, Bob is great with the kids, he's in schools every year. I know he's been talking with Mathis.
Yes.
So, he's very excited about Fire Prevention Week this year. So, thank you.
All right, this time turn the media over to Calvin for his.
Good evening, board. I have a couple of things that we like to kind of go through. First, want to start with a couple of highlights as we typically do. We've got some really great things that have been going on in the district over the last couple of weeks. You've already heard Mr. Burley talk a little bit about the cross-country invitational that we just held. Things were really great, kids did a really wonderful job. We had really runners here from all over the state, some of the best in the nation were actually here in our schools, starting with our students. Our top male finisher from Wayne was Matt Traybold, did a really wonderful job. And the top female finisher was Adriana Berrent. I'm hoping I'm saying that last name correctly. Just really an excellent get-together and a lot of great things. We continue to get notices from others who attended the event, talking about how really things went well and are looking forward to the upcoming state competition as well. So, we also wanted to highlight a couple of nice things that are happening around the district. Today, we're over at the primary school and our students are really being inspired by Vincent Van Gogh in our class. You should see the work that they're doing. The kids are just doing a fantastic job. So, we have our open house that'll be coming up and all the different events, you'll see some of this art, some of the parents will see it, you'll see some of it throughout the hallways, but I tell you, Mr. Watson, just having a lot of fun with the kids and just really doing a great job with introducing kids to Vincent Van Gogh.
Mathis, I just have to tell you that the reason I'm chuckling is when my daughter's going to kindergarten, this was the very first kindergarten project they did. My daughter Jenna, who is very artsy, came home and said, Mom, we paid his sunflowers and we pushed, and our teacher read us a book or what, and I'm Vinnie Van Gogh. And I still have the sunflowers hanging in my room. So, it's Vinnie Van Gogh, like she doing well.
So, great things happening within the arts over at the primary school. Just some things in terms of highlights, also you, a couple of folks, Matt's already talked a little bit about the back-to-school bash, had lots of families, hundreds of families coming out. We really enjoyed the evening, lots of food, fun, and friends, and really just glad that our kids were able to all come together and just really had a wonderful night. So, we thank all of our parents and all of our staff who made that event a real success. Just want to give some transition updates. We are continuing to monitor things with regard to our transition. At this time, our students and teachers are continuing to do really great work together in the classrooms as they have always done in the past. We are making sure that we keep our eyes on a couple of things. So, one of the concerns that we heard some things about over the last couple of weeks were lunch and recess, particularly at our middle school. And want to make sure that folks know that we are out and about and looking at the cafeterias at all of our schools actually, and checking in when we hear something. We are making sure that we go out and see, because we want to make sure that kids have enough time to eat and also that they can go out and participate in their recess. At the middle school, the playground is in place, staffing is in place. We also have some additional games that are being ordered. The principals shared with me just even yesterday, she's ordering some additional games, not only for the recess, but also for, they have a game club that they're going to have in place at the middle school. So, just making sure that we continue to work through that. In the middle school, in the cafeteria, I actually was able to go to the cafeteria a couple of times and have some of our administrators there. We just want to kind of make sure the kids are doing really well. I have to tell you, our kids are really enjoying one another and doing really well in the middle school cafeteria. One of the things though that we do want to do to help with some of our lines, we have a couple of lines that do individual kinds of meals. So, one's a sandwich bar and they make these individual sandwiches. Some kids like a wrap, some kids like, you know, the sandwich with the buns, the subs, you know, those kinds of things. We want to add an extra person there because we think that'll help that line to really be even smoother for kids. So, we're going to do some things and we'll be coming back to you around that, but things really are going well. In terms of transportation, so we have been continuing to work as we do, usually the first two or three weeks of the school year are really big weeks for transportation in districts. And we've been really working on the transportation piece. I can tell you tonight that things have gotten better. I, at this time, on my desk, I only have really one outstanding concern that I'm working through and pretty much that situation is pretty much resolved, but that's the only thing that I know of at this time. When we hear concerns, we are investigating those concerns, we're going out to see them firsthand. I was on the buses last week quite a bit. Our administrators have been on the buses. And our goal is to really kind of see firsthand what's happening and we want to make sure things are going smooth. We're on the buses and timing things to see what's happening. Just want to make sure we get a bird's eye view of really what's going on. And things are, honestly, they appear to be settling. We are though consistently going to be committed to monitoring the progress and continue to watch things as we do every year. One of the things that we want people to do is if there are concerns, so we have a protocol in place in our district to resolve concerns. And what we're asking people to do and we'll continue to ask them to do is please, if there's something that's going wrong, you know, start with the transportation director, give him a call, let him know. If you don't find success there, then the next step would be Mr. Exepp, the assistant superintendent who's over that area. And then certainly my door is always open. Our goal is to resolve concerns as quickly as we can at the lowest level of the organization as quickly as possible. So, again, we are asking people if there are some things that are going on, let us know and we will certainly respond accordingly. So, I know that some of you have already alluded tonight to the News Eight report. So, we've had a couple of things that have honestly have been said in the media the last couple of weeks. So, we had at one point some information going on around a bomb threat about a week or so ago. And some of the information that was reported on Channel Eight's website and reported really kind of wasn't clear and it kind of got a lot of people confused. I think they mixed up. So, I was given, so all the superintendents were given a statement from our BOCs to put onto our website about a concern that was happening up at the Wayne Technical Center campus. And I, for some reason, the information got mixed up. And so, it kind of led some of the parents to believe that we were having issues here on the campus and we really weren't at all. So, we did reach out to the channel and ask that they repair that and change that, and they did do some updating with regard to that. But also this week, there was a report out saying some things that just aren't true. As some of you have said, there was some thoughts on there that we are not dropping kids off to babysitters, we're not allowing kids to go to babysitters. And that's just not true. I can tell you that on, as you all know, on many of our buses, we've got kids who get dropped off to daycare centers or to babysitters. I was on one bus recently that had, it's probably, the bus has two pretty big homes with babysitting, you know, kids who go to the babysitter. One stop we pulled up to, there were ten kids who got out of the bus. Another stop we pulled up to, there were eight kids who got out of the bus. So, you know, and they're going to the babysitter's house. So, just inaccurate, not true information. And we did reach out to Channel Eight and we asked that they please revise that information. They did revise the information and put some additional stuff up on their webpage. It just, so, you know, we are working with Channel Eight, but you know, our goal is to make sure that accurate information is out there in the public. One of the other concerns that we heard about around that whole news coverage was around bus passes. So, then we've had some people on social media talking about bus passes and we know that this year we are enacting some changes around our bus passes. Really, we did some things different around safety and security, we wanted to make sure our kids were safe. And also, we talked to folks before doing this, as you kind of mentioned tonight, through the policy, through our board meetings, some of the people who are here tonight were at many of those meetings. And those meetings are by the way also televised, we have them on video for the public to see. But we have also told people that should, you know, an emergency arise or something come up that is an extenuating circumstance, they should reach out to the principal or reach out to the director of transportation and we will work through those issues as they arise. So, we are encouraging people, if something comes up that's a true extenuating circumstance or emergency, let us know. Start with the principal or the transportation director and we will kind of go from there. But we also had some questions, just so you know, over the last week about, well, what are other schools doing, you know, compared to us? So, this year, we are telling our folks that you get up to three locations to drop kids off at. And we also said that we're not unfortunately going to be able to continue the past system that we had in the past and we're enacting those changes. So, I wanted you to know I did do some research and wanted to bring that back tonight so that people would know as well. So, we looked at a couple of districts that are around. Rush Harrietta is one. You know, you heard in the study, some of the folks say that our district was doing more than places that were bigger. You know, you heard in the study, some of the folks say that our district was doing more than places that were bigger than us, that had much more funds than we had. We were just going way above and beyond. So, in the Rusharieta District, they have a consistent transportation program. And you can go onto their site, and all these are right on the websites. We got the information right from there. Children are picked up and dropped off at the same location from week to week there. In Churchville, you have to have information in by April 1st. So, there's no last-minute changes, you know, before the school year starts unless something, you just moved in. And the district requires schedules to be the same from week to week. Varying schedules cannot be accommodated at all. They're not. And this is, again, right off of their applications. We pulled the information right from there. When you look at Geneva, which is in our BOCs, you know, changes received after August 1st may not be processed until the second full week of school. There will be no temporary changes in pickup and drop-off of students. Fluctuating schedules are not accommodated at all in Geneva. In Spenceport, transportation shall be consistent Monday through Friday for the entire year. There's no change in here or there. It's the same schedule. In Greece, the district provides transportation to or from daycare providers for kids who are eligible. And the students may be picked up at one location, dropped off at another. However, arrangements must stay consistent. So, as you hear these things, very consistent with our things that we're doing now. Penfield, once a week, transportation schedule is established, once a weekly transportation is established, it's gotta stay consistent. Fairport, information has to be in by April 1st. And then frequent and inconsistent changes in busing are not permitted and must be approved by school administrators. West Doron Great, children must ride the same bus every day. They put it right on the application, and be dropped off at the same bus stop every day. Requests for transportation to alternate addresses on alternate days will not be honored. So, you know, just looking at some of those things that are happening, and there are more. There are so many more. You will see, actually, in some places, in many places, we're doing more by offering three locations than other districts are actually doing. And that's the truth. I mean, I know Channel 8 didn't report that, but that's the truth. And we're enacting these changes. And honestly, for the most part, things are okay. But change, sometimes it takes time to help our public to go through those changes. And we're committed to doing that and helping people. But again, we're really not out of line with what others are doing. We truly are not. And it really is based upon what each district needs are. But that's, those are the, those are things that, again, you can go right onto those webpages and you can see it yourself. Okay? Yes?
April 1st is not a cheat date, first of all. Take that information in, because we're in July, right?
Yes.
So, okay, we're waiting for this. But one thing I want to clarify before it goes to the world. If you contact whoever the principal is or an administrator, we'll work to our best of our ability to make that happen. But we're not promising we're gonna be able to alter. Because I don't want somebody to come back and say, "You said right here, right go there."
Well, so if there is an extenuating circumstance and people, and there is that, we are working with people to make sure that that takes place. We truly are. And we, and the one thing that we're helping people understand is that it's not just like, "Well, I just don't want to come and get them today." It really has to be, you know, somebody's sick, someone can't get there, someone's stuck in traffic, something's really going on. And we're working with people. We truly are. We had a couple of people called in just this week. I believe Greg, you had one just the other day, and I had one. And we work with the, we work with the public. So, if there are real things that are going on, we will work with our folks. And if people have questions or have concerns, so again, we have a protocol for resolving concerns in place. So, you can always, again, reach out, ask for the Transportation Director, ask for the Assistant Superintendent. Feel free to call my office and we'll work through that. Yes?
Man, because with regard to the bus passes, I had one of the secretaries at one of the primary or elementary schools actually come up to me at a function and say, "Thank you," about the bus passes. It has created such a, so much less anxiety. They're not running out to the bus to pull a kid off. They're not overloading the buses. They know where the kids are going. And it just is what's the best and the safest. And very, districts are not, there's just too many issues. You cannot do that anymore. So, playdates, scouts, whatever.
Much of what we were concerned about, when you talk to these other places, they have, they had the same concerns. Okay? So, our goal is that, again, we understand that this is a change. We're gonna keep, you know, working through those changes. Our goal is to keep kids safe on our buses. We want to make sure we transport kids without confusion. And so, we'll continue to enact efficiencies, and our goal is to really continue to work together with everyone. Okay? And again, if there are any concerns, please, give those people the calls and give, you know, even my door's open, and we'll work through concerns. All right. So, with that said, I have two guests tonight, and I asked them to come on up and join me tonight. These two gentlemen are with us, and they're joining us. I'm really excited about a partnership that I have been working on and our superintendents from the region have actually been working on around mental health. Please, come on in, take a seat. So, we have some items that we'll kind of put out, but I wanted to share some things with you. So, we have, James, maybe I'll let these gentlemen introduce themselves and give you their title, and then we'll get to talking.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Jim Heitz. I'm the Mental Health Director for Wayne County and the Department of Mental Health. We also have an agency, Wayne Behavioral Health Network, which I oversee as part of the department as well.
Good evening. And I'm Ed Hunt. I'm the Deputy Director of Wayne County Mental Health.
So, last year, we had did, we really did a lot of talking. And even in one of our board members, our meetings, rather, we had some questions come up around mental health. What could we do to better support our students around mental health? And I'm just so excited because these gentlemen have really, they're like a real godsend. They're here to help us with that. Many of us, and when I say us, not only myself, but superintendents from the entire county, have been looking for ways that we might support students. And so, we were able to come up with a partnership from Wayne County Mental Health that we'd like to share tonight. So, we'll just kind of jump in. So, Wayne County Mental Health has some funds that they like to help out, not just here at Wayne, but really with all the schools across the districts. And what they like to do is to come in and to provide some mental health supports. So, they have some staff that like to bring in and team up with our staff. And what we'd like to do is offer some support in all of our classrooms. So, at grade six, one of the things we like to do is offer a life skills program to our sixth graders. And there's about fifteen sessions that this involves. And there's a licensed mental health person who comes in, and there's a program that they actually teach to help our students across the entire district with mental health. Want to share a little bit about that?
Sure. You have some information in front of you in this packet here that sort of just has this cover page. And it gives you a little more in-depth description of each of these programs that Dr. Calvin is describing here. And there are actually four of them in total. And Life Skills is one of them that we, as Dr. Calvin mentioned, want to give across sixth grade, not only in Wayne Central, but in every school district in Wayne County. The County Department of Mental Health is investing about a half a million dollars in being able to bring a unified, consistent substance abuse prevention education program to each and every school district in Wayne County. And here at Wayne Central, each school district, including Wayne Central, will receive these four evidence-based programs, which means we know that research has demonstrated that these programs are effective in setting out to do what they intend to do in reducing risk and improving outcomes for children with alcohol and substance abuse use, and helping them make better decisions around ever getting started with anything like that in the first place, and giving them some skills to help them manage those pressures or those interests along the way. Or even if they're dealing with something in terms of substance use, how do we help them tackle that issue? And we're bringing in licensed professionals to deliver these services. We're prescribing these services in each school district, but we're really sort of tailoring it uniquely to each school district, based on what the school administration prefers to see and exactly where do these programs take place, which grade levels, what, how is that rolled out in each school? The literature gives you a little better description of each one of those programs. Life Skills is starting out this year in sixth grade. That particular model intervention has some added components on it. Next year, we intend to add the seventh grade and the year after that, the eighth grade. And each one of those components builds upon the previous year. So, they're not getting the same thing. The sixth graders, when they move into seventh grade, aren't getting the same Life Skills program. They're getting a new Life Skills program, which is aimed at seventh grade. And the other ones will continue wherever the school wants to see them happen. And the good thing is, is there's no cost to the school district for that, right?
So, yes, which is a great thing.
One of the good things.
One of the good things. So, the second group of programs is called Second Step. Second Step actually is, as you said, an evidence-based program. It helps kids to identify, you know, proper responses in terms of behaviors. It puts them into the mode of being in a situation and how to best resolve that situation. So, they may be given, for example, at the earlier grades, with some of the lessons, the kids are basically, they'll have a lesson where the teacher talks about empathy for someone else. They talk about what it means to be bullied and how do you handle that? And then, if you're upset or you're frustrated, how do you work through those kinds of issues? So, there's a variety of lessons that are age-appropriate, K through eight. So, with K through five, the children will receive twenty-two sessions. Six through eight, thirteen sessions worth of that. At the high school level, the program is what we call RRR, and then they receive five sessions of that. Now, where is this gonna be done at? Our goal is, we're gonna be working with our PD teachers, our health teachers, and we're gonna be looking at areas where we can push in and do these kinds of supports. We have counselors, by the way, that'll also be working and partnering with the county on that. The third group of support that's offered is what's called Project Success. It's also a program. It's offered seventh through twelfth grade, and it has twelve sessions that is a part of that as well. Want to share any, anywhere I want to take?
No, you did, you did great. You got a, you gave a good go for me.
So, three different, or excuse me, four different types of programs, but all are geared to really work through behavioral mental health, to support all kids in all districts. And, you know, really, just really a unique group of programs.
To give a little more background on it, historically, you know, we've sort of taken an approach where we funded these services for many, many years in many of the school districts. And they were really sort of inconsistent. Each district tailored things in terms of the specific program with the provider that we work closely with, which is Delphi. And I wanted to sort of take a little more control over that and have a program that we knew was going to be the same program going out all over Wayne County in all of the schools and bring a level of consistency and continuity to the programming. The schools are free to build upon that if they'd like to with the provider and add additional things. But I wanted to provide this bare minimum program to each district at no cost to them, so.
So, those are the four components that we'll be offering, K through twelve. And again, the support is provided by the county for no cost at all to the district. Supports are also provided, again, by licensed mental health providers. And those providers will partner with our counseling staff to ensure continuity and consistency throughout the district. Aside from those supports, one of the things that we also like to do is we'd like to bring in some additional supports for some of our kids who have more severe needs and really need to have a counselor available, really through a clinic. So, currently, we have some families in our district who are receiving supports from the county, but really getting out to Lyons. So, today I was out to meet with these gentlemen, and I kind of got lost. But getting out to Lyons, it's a drive to get out there. And what we'd like to do is really bring supports as close to the school as we possibly can. So, one of the things that the county does is that they go into other schools, and they actually have clinics that are in the buildings. And so, there's staff that's there on hand, who can meet with students, who can go in and support students, who can meet with families during school hours or after hours, and make it accessible in a much easier way as opposed to them trying to get all the way out to Lyons. So, one of the things that the county has agreed to do is to actually give us some clinics for our schools. I'd like to have one in every school, and it sounds like they're committed to doing that. But we'd like to start at least with three, if not the fourth. We're gonna start with at least three. And then the clinics will provide those mental health supports for our students and families. The staff will also be certified mental health staff. And the clinics, again, are free of charge to the district. Want to add some other shows?
Yeah, we've been doing this sort of work for nearly twenty years now in terms of bringing licensed clinic, satellite clinics, right into a school building and delivering treatment, psychotherapy treatment, right to the children, right on-site at the school. We first began in the Sodas School District and the North Rose area. And we had about three satellites when I first started as Mental Health Director over twelve years ago. And now, we have twenty-one buildings, school buildings in the county that are staffed with licensed mental health professionals, delivering the treatment, working closely with the school team and the staff at the, on-site at the school. We, if we add the four school buildings here, that'll bring us up to about twenty-seven out of thirty-seven school buildings in the county. Our goal as a county is to have a satellite in each and every school building in Wayne County. And we've been moving in that direction each year, adding a few more every year. The licensed individual who is at the clinic on the school property is either an LMSW, which is a licensed mental master social worker, or a licensed clinical social worker, or a licensed mental health counselor. Any one of those three professions serves as a primary therapist for us. They're supervised by senior supervising clinical staff back at our main office in Lyons, our main clinic there. We have about a hundred staff people on our team, of multidisciplinary teams, from psychiatrists, nurse practitioners, nurses, all these therapists that I mentioned, and so on. The bulk of them are licensed clinical professionals. We have the good fortune of having two full-time, board-certified child psychiatrists that oversee each and every case of children that we're working with. We have, by the way, about over four thousand patients in our clinics now. And we deliver between sixty-two, deliver between sixty-two thousand and sixty-five thousand visits this year alone. And each and every one of those cases is overseen by a psychiatrist, signs off on the treatment plan, reviews the plans that we're developing in terms of delivering the treatment. Some children just need therapy, and that's sufficient for their issues. Some children also warrant having some medication intervention. And we work closely with families on that issue and making our recommendations to them, advising them what we think would be helpful to help the child deal with their mental health issue. And that's all done with parental consent. Even the psychotherapy is as well, too. We don't treat a child unless the parent agrees to that. We are in, as I mentioned, nine out of the eleven school districts. The only two districts we're not going, we're not in at the moment is Red Creek and Williamson. But we intend to be there at some point in the very near future. And again, this program is at no cost to the district. If the family has health insurance, we'll build a health insurance for the visit. If they don't, that doesn't matter. We don't deny any services based on inability to pay. And we actually have sliding scales right down to zero. If they can't pay, that's fine. We'll still deliver the treatment. And so, there's no risk in terms of that financial piece to the family.
And the biggest thing that our part is, is just to give them the space. So, the spaces have to be certified by a state office. And we certainly do have some spaces in each of the buildings that will be receiving those supports. And the goal is really to support those students who really need these supports. You know, to be quite frank and honest with you, we do have some children who really need mental health supports. In fact, it's been a real challenge over the last couple of years. Now, I've been here for a couple of years now, and one of the things that we've talked about is support like this. We really need the support here in the district. So, to have an opportunity such as this one, where there is no cost, and the county coming to us rather than having our families try to go there. And it's difficult trying to get appointments and get people there and trying to transport them. But now, it's right here, and it can touch all of the students in some way. We just really think is a great benefit. And so, that's kind of where we're at. We are, as you know, the largest, you know, district in the county, and we're one of the few that didn't have this support in place. So, to be able to acquire this, we think is a really good thing.
When are you looking at starting, like, this school year right now?
Yeah, I'll get to it, just, yeah, good question. I'll go right to it. By the way, get benefits. Student support will be offered here on campus. Parents can get support closer to home. Mental health staff can support students while they are in the school. And then overall, community support is provided. And lastly, the school and county are partnering to meet the mental health needs of all of our students. Whomever needs help, help will be there. Whomever needs help, help will be there.
And it really reduces the amount of out-of-school time for a child if they have to have an appointment like this elsewhere. And so, it's a win-win for families in terms of transportation issues and missing school time and so on, so.
Just one question. Have you also, do you also work in partnership with places like Autism Up or Autism Speaks or the Autism Center, or even just the Living Clinic? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Where you work, where sometimes, you know, if it's not mental health, it may be just special needs.
Exactly.
And kind of like, do you have partnerships with them, or are you working with them?
We can certainly, and we do, and, and we have a number of contracts with a variety of community partners in Wayne County, and if someone needs to go outside there or they have, you know, that service isn't available here, we'll certainly try to make that linkage and referral. We also have psychology services here with, with PhD licensed psychologists. We have a whole array of, of testing instruments and psychological testing tools that we can help utilize to identify and diagnose issues, including some particular tools related to autism as well, so.
So, when you have one of these satellites, I'm assuming there's not somebody there five days a week, all eight hours?
You know, it really depends on the demand and the need. We usually sort of walk before we run, and we're happy to get started in all four school buildings here and, and license a space in each one. And we're, you know, we're dedicated to a full-time individual who will be the permanent person who works in this school district, and that's their assignment, and that's what they do. We don't rotate staff and have them bouncing all over. We want to build a, a strong relationship with the school community, and that community knows us, we know them, and we're sort of enmeshed into your, your, your team here and become a part of that. And as the demand increases, or whatever it is, we'll adjust our commitment in terms of time here accordingly. And, and that means even if we have to get a second person at some point, we'll do that.
We love four people. It's all good. It's free, so I better be going. But anyway, we appreciate it.
Nothing's free.
Yes, I know, I know, I know.
Does this take through eight?
Well, basically, you know, we get some assistance from the state in terms of state aid and also fees for services. We, we, we're a medical practice essentially, and, and, you know, we are able to bill insurances for our services, and so, collecting fees in that manner helps us subsidize the, cover the costs.
What do you find is the, is it anxiety, is it drug-related, is it?
It's, it's a lot of things. It's both. You, you know, I don't know if, you've all had a chance to see the evaluation metrics survey that was done in Wayne County.
So, every year, we do a survey with our kids, and, and we figure out what challenges kids are facing, so we just got those results back. We'll come back and share that survey results with, with you so you can see some of the needs of our kids. We have some children who have needs around drug and alcohol, some kids who are experiencing mental health needs, some really severe mental health needs. And that survey helps to, you know, get grants and things like that, like these types of programs.
Yeah, so we see self-injurious behaviors that are happening. We see children that are dealing with depression and anxiety. We see them having suicidal thoughts. All of those things. We see substance abuse. Sometimes, you know, I see the big picture on the county. I'm sure Dr. Calvin gets it broken down by his school district here, his school district here. I see the bigger picture with all of that rolled up. And it, you know, it, it, it says a lot to me, and it really demonstrates the need in our, our community and our county, and no one's exempt from this. It's everywhere, and that's why we take this, you know, this step to, to bring something like this right to the schools. The other thing that we do in conjunction with the clinic is we have what's called an early recognition screening program. So, we have a person that's dedicated to going out into school districts and surveying and, and using some evidence-based tools to get information. It could come from a teacher, it could come from the student directly, it could come from the, the parents of the, of the child, all three different sorts of tools that are really just screening tools that would give us an indication if a child might warrant a more formal evaluation and assessment. And if, if they, you know, we, if we give that screening instrument to somebody and it comes back positive that we should do a little more formal evaluation, we'll contact that, that parent and talk to them about that and, and make that happen if they'd like it to. So, that's another way that we identify children and the needs that they might have.
Okay. And, and just so people know, too, because this is being videotaped, so, you know, if there are families who say, "I don't want to be seen in my local school area," they always have the right to still go and travel to the facilities and, and other places as well.
Yeah, it's certainly a voluntary program. People have to want to participate if they. There are times when we open satellite clinics where we have families who opt to transition to the satellite clinic at that school, and other times, families and children decide to stay at the main clinic. Totally. And as much as we really want to work closely with the school district, we are a healthcare provider, and if a family doesn't want us to share that protected health information with the school, we, we are obligated not to. And so, we respect families' wishes regarding that, but we try to work with them as much as we can, and we get their consent to do so.
So, in terms of timeline, to, just to get to that question there, so, our first semester here, our goal is to make sure that, that these wonderful people meet with our administrators and to begin to talk through our implementation of the programs. By our second semester of the year, our goal is to ensure that we have the satellites in place throughout the district as well as those supports in place. So, in terms of the clinics themselves, it really, in terms of how fast it can get up and going, it really depends on how fast that state agency approves those particular sites. So, they, there's a person that's to come out, I, I know this gentleman does pictures of the site and sends information, is the state, someone has to approve it. Once it's approved, you can get going pretty much right away. So, typically, right now, they're opening, they're getting approvals back.
They, we've been, yeah, we've been getting them pretty quickly. I mean, I would think realistically, we would be able to start sometime end of October, early November, somewhere around there.
So, so that's what we wanted to share with you tonight. We want to kind of bring that to the district. Any questions, Board? Are you okay?
Just a comment. I've seen your agency work with a neighboring school, and I commend Dr. Calvin for making the opportunity to bring it here, because I think anybody who's in education today says that the needs are expanding faster than, than what is supplied. So, I, I commend the opportunity to bring this program to Wayne.
We're very excited about it.
This is just, I guess, I probably already know the answer. Bringing people, families and outsiders in during the school day and things, I'm up for a security issue of getting into the building.
So, we, we will have a, a secure spot, a secure place. Most of these, again, are, are families, so they have to go through their, our regular procedures. Sign in, you know, sign out. It's, they are our families, so they're already here. It's, it's not like someone wait, who's not from the district.
I understand, and just, I'm thinking of people coming in and out that are, some might not normally be in those buildings.
So, we, we will have our procedures that will make sure we enact, we keep in place to let everybody stays.
Right, and most commonly, and, you know, it's not every single visit that is including parents at the time. Sometimes, the child is met with alone. So, e- even though we may be busy throughout the day, it's not always families coming in consistently throughout that time. There, there may be select times and, and appointments made. Everything is by appointment also. And we, we work closely with the school administration staff to coordinate the scheduling of those events as well. I'll, I'll just add, too, we're mentioning the state agency that issues our license. We're actually licensed by two state agencies. The New York State Office of Alcohol and Substance Abuse Services for our addictions programs. We, we operate addiction programs as well. And the mental health programs are licensed by the New York State Office of Mental Health.
Do you have another copy of this pamphlet?
I think I do, yeah.
Okay, Board? All right. Well, I want to thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming.
Yep, I'm going to show you some posters, too. We have a suicide prevention coalition which met today, and I'll leave you some posters about that. We have a, I know you having Kevin Hines come here. I don't want to steal any thunder from you. But we're also, we also have Kevin Hines coming for a day-long conference on October twenty-fourth at the Bosse Center Conference Center. He'll be speaking to really a professional community, professional audience of mental health and, health and human service professionals. But that was overwhelmingly successful and sold out in two days, two hundred seats. We decided to bring Kevin again another evening, and we're bringing Kevin Hines here on Wednesday, the following day, in the evening at the Palmac School, and that's free to the public. It's a, a more abbreviated presentation aimed at families and parents and concerned individuals who are, are interested in this issue. I'll leave you some information on that. Feel free to do what you like with that. And thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Thanks very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. So, we'll pass these around, Board, and you can kind of see the upcoming piece. And as more information becomes available about this, we will provide more updates for, for the Board and for the community, and we will, once we have things in place, we'll make sure that we share it so that everybody in our community knows more. We're going to shift now, and if there are no more questions, we're going to bring up Mrs. Scheich, our Special Ed Director. Each year, we try to just review with you all some of the things that are happening in terms of special education, and we'd like to just share with you the continuum of educational services that we're providing for students and where we're at right now in terms of classification rate and numbers by disabilities, just so that you can have some hope with that.
I first want to say how excited I am that actually we're going to partnership up with the Wayne County Mental Health. We are seeing more and more of our students needing supports, but having difficulty being able to get out to the site, so I'm very excited about that partnership. So, I'll just switch it for me. As Dr. Calvin said, here, I want to talk about the current classification rate. This year, our current classification rate is thirteen point four percent. Last year, it was thirteen point seven. It's a little bit of a decline, but staying right within that, that area. Currently, the state classification rate is sixteen percent, so we are under that classification rate from the state. When we take a look at classifying a student with a disability, we look at thirteen different classifications, and really, one-third of our students that are classified fall under that other health impairment, and that really talks about students who are diagnosed, diagnosed with a, could be a mental health diagnosis, could be diagnosed with ADHD, but that's the, the majority of the population that we serve currently. Then, it goes down to having students with speech and language impairments and learning disabilities. So, those are really the three main classifications that we serve the students with.
Michelle, the thirteen point four does not include CPSC?
It does not include CPSC. It's just our K through twelve. Just kind of taking a look at where, where students currently are receiving the services. If you take a look at the first, in the first four buildings, that is our students that ninety, ninety-six percent of our students are actually receiving services here right at Wayne Central. So, we're able to do that because we have a wonderful staff that's able to work with the students and being able to keep them here at Wayne Central. If you take a look at the numbers, we're down a little bit in each building, but it fluctuates from year to year. Probably over the last five years or so, our numbers have fluctuated from students like two-hundred-and-eighty-five to three-hundred students that are classified. And the reason why that there could be a dip, it could be a student moved out of the district, they could be declassified, or we may have to do a more restrictive environment and send them out of district. If you take a look at our out-of-district students, last year, we had nine. This year, we have thirteen students that are out of district. Typically, our students that are out of district receive, are out of district because we don't have the resources here for them. So, our younger kids are out of district, and they go to Wayne Finger Lakes, Bosse's at Mid Lakes, and there's students that have difficulties with communication, you know, they have severe delays, but we're not able to provide that support for them here. They have a classroom that's enriched with speech therapists right in the classroom all day long and aides and other supports. And the other part of our out-of-district kids are kids that typically have some behavioral issues. So, behavioral issues that we don't have the resources to provide. So, they may need some additional supports above and beyond what we have, so we're not able to provide those supports. Other students that actually come into the district are what are called consortium students. They're students that are actually in Wayne County schools. We currently have a student from all of the Wayne County schools except one, and what they do is, they may not be able to provide the service for the child, so we're able to provide that support for the students. It seems to be that we're starting to, you know, get a, they want to come here to, for our consortium, and our teachers do a fantastic job of providing them the support. So, last year, we're at nineteen, now we're at twenty-four students. And also, remember, for those consortium students, they do pay tuition, so we do get, receive revenue from the districts to help support the cost of the programs. And you know, last year, we talked about we had a lot of students that moved into our district and a lot of them that were classified. Currently, this year, we have twenty-three students that have moved into the district and came into the district needing services. We just had another one today, so that number is actually twenty-four of students. Interestingly enough, the twenty-three of the students that moved in, two of the students currently were already in out-of-district placements, and five other students were in high-needs programs that we're able to provide for them here. And continuum of services, we're still continuing to provide the continuum of services. We really want to take a look at the least restrictive environment for our students, and as I indicated, ninety-six percent of our students are serviced here at Wayne Central, going from consultant teacher to resource room and then looking at self-contained classrooms. I did want to talk about two new classrooms that we implemented this year. We always take a look at what are the needs of the students, and we had some kindergarten students coming in that needed some additional support, so we actually created a life skills classroom at the primary building, which is new for us. We haven't had a primary life skills program in several years. And then, also, we have added a additional six-one-one classroom at the middle school. Last year, we had talked about not needing that because we didn't have the numbers. We, we did have a move-in. We have a consortium student, and we have another student who's moving back into program from an out-of-district, so we needed to create a new six-one-one classroom for fifth and sixth grade. So, we always take a look at the students' needs and provide that support for them. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions, Board, about the current services that we're providing, the numbers of kids that we have in our district, or the classification rates, or, or different types of classifications that we have? Okay? Okay, so we just wanted to share that with you and make sure everybody knew what was happening in terms of special ed. Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks.
All right, so tonight, in terms of the Board business and consent agenda, under Board business, we do have a professional development plan that would need your approval tonight. So, at our last meeting, Joe shared that information. It is a part of your packet. We certainly want to make sure we get that whole piece all set. And then, under the consent agenda, we do have some personnel action items, your, the recent Board meeting minutes, and then, there are some gifts for Lego League. I believe there are two of them at two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars that we would need approval for tonight. So, with that said, I think that's, that's all that we have tonight. Any other questions at all, Board? Thank you for your time.
All right, because we'll move into our action items for this evening. On Board business, I need a motion to approve the professional development plan. Phil? Second. Steve? Any discussion? All in favor? Any vote? Thank you. All right, just the amended gen, consent agenda. So, I need a motion to approve the amended consent agenda. Matt? Second. Carrie? Any discussion? All in favor? Any vote? Thank you. Now, we need a motion to approve the personnel item with Nicole Welch doing supervising athletic events. Steve? Second. Carla? Any discussion? All in favor? Any vote? We understand. Thank you. All right, we move on to our committee reports. Auto-committing, Matt?
Coming up. We met last Thursday, and the major subject was going over Plains' auditors' report from April to August, and happy to report there were no major findings, just procedural things. Got an update on, status update on internal audit, risk assessment, external audit, and And happy to report there are no major findings, just procedural things. Got an update on, status update on internal audit, risk assessment, external audit, and extra classroom audit. And that was about, closed out an item. It was that that had to do with policy. In fifty-two twenty, that was a closed-out item that the, we enacted before the end of the year, May twenty-fifth. So that was it. And our next meeting is October twelfth at five-thirty in this room.
My Policy Committee, Carrie?
Our meeting will be October fifth at six p.m. in this room. I spoke with Nikki, and they have not met yet, but they assured me that they will probably meet at some point next month.
Communication?
We have not met yet. We have our meeting scheduled for the fifth at five-thirty in this room.
All right, I have no more members present. We need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Jeremy, second. Steve? Any discussion about adjournment? All in favor? Any vote?